Councilmember Berlinsa Costa?
Aye.
Councilmember Questa?
Aye.
Councilmember Dromo? Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Keenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sedaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Matza?
Aye.
Council President Volle?
Aye. Good evening, Mr. President. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of Elizabeth, convening and handing this award to the Republican Party. Noted that we have been in permanent possession on the City Hall of Baltimore, Reserve of South Manhattan, and its own file of the Sec Works and ABC War Secretary, Colonel 6, City Hall, Elizabeth New Jersey, Deputy President of Public West. They come up with any notice of the election's bylaw. The helm will be issued to the requirement of the new Jersey Republican Party. I just happen to ask everyone who's standing to join us as Councilman Gonzalez. We'd be pleased to release this flag.
I'm pleased to place this to certify in the United States of America and deliver a lot of noble which stands: "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Herr Prusel, sir. Prude.
Hi, Councilmember President.
Who next, Secretary? Volle. Councilmember Berlinsa Costa?
Aye.
Councilmember Questa?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Excuse me.
Councilmember Keenan?
Excuse me.
Councilmember Sedaniel?
Excuse me.
Councilmember Matza?
Aye.
Council President Volle? Aye, by my side. In the group, hope you speak, any resident of taxpayer of the mightiest government or the city council in any matter. Any resident of taxpayer of the rest city council in any matter takes their forms into any and every register range. Once again, any resident of taxpayer of the rest city council in any matter takes their forms into any and every register range. Stand up. For your motion of being. First of all, a business, motion to approve in front of the respect ABC meeting on November 27th, Congress. Next one of business, requesting removal of special edition. Place funding, Columbia Restaurant LLC, trade at Burton Restaurant. L.A. area, we have a sub license on the C, S062. State number 2004, S33-122, S48. Located on 821 Spanish Street, New Jersey, Post Secretary position. Out of operation, set lays in, wait until 10:00 a.m. In addition, that shall be no, no over, no out of the 10:00. Second floor is also licensed for back home consumption, but not to be used until August 7th. Claimed and approved from proper management department effective April 27th, 2010. License holders are requested restricted to be changed as follow. Out of operation, seven days, wait until June 20th. Good evening, good afternoon, evening.
Joseph Sanz, we have the, uh, members, evening, maybe councilman Volle.
Evening.
Good evening, good evening. Plaid, just for the evening. Easy, uh, president, correct, Columbia Questions, LLC. Madam Members, second. Okay, we made requests to lift the closing hours and from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m. seven days a week. Uh, that was a request. Columbia just indicated to me tonight that he was possibly, he was checking competition to maybe possibly until 3:00 a.m. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I don't know if that's possible, make a request now, making a request, he asked to do so. But, uh, I understand it's going to be probation here. Uh, but that's very important.
Well, since we had made a agreement for this 2:00 a.m. appointment, and 2:00 a.m. for the six month period, and everything's go well for the six month period time, you can come back, and then we'll see what we can, let that go to three. Now, I'm honest, we've had a conversation before, uh, you do it for six months, and then come back, come back. I please begin the microphone, we cannot understand what you're saying. This is a question. I, I, we, we made a bid. And most aware of the competition. You're going to have six months.
Mr. President, as the President, we can't even compensate.
I made a request to go to the big one, that's one. Uh, I hope we had a date, we go, I guess for 2:00 a.m. from now to six months, and that's what I'm going to stand by.
Mr. President, I think it's very important that we stick with the application as we originally presented, the only established question where in the future people come to meet and then request an extension beyond what they requested in writing. Yes, I'm supporting your position.
Okay?
That's fine.
Okay. So out of operation, seven days a week, like two a.m., six months, you come back, and we'll run this specific. A, go to the past, six months. Senior, Volle. Councilmember.
And of course, dear most, I'm sorry, second.
It's a second.
Who, please say aye. I'm sorry, what's the second?
Councilmember Berlinsa Costa?
Aye.
Councilmember Questa?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Keenan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sedaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Matza?
Aye.
Council President Volle?
Aye, the ayes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next order of business, how is the person placed, placed, captured, lower, Ramada? Ramada Inc., United Market, delivery area, we check the sub license. A number 2004, S3-159, United Market, House number C, S29. Phone located at 39, East Capitol Avenue, Elizabeth New Jersey, Post Secretary position. With merely that, this is one of them, followed by Elizabeth New Jersey, Post Secretary position. To the new station. House, Columbia, City Trade, that's the new station, House, L.A. area, we check the sub license, number 2004, S33-159, S206. City license on the C, S229, to next new location, at 252, Mars Avenue, Elizabeth New Jersey, Post Secretary position. That is an active private license on this location, proper function. Sell, ah, six ten, open, Avenue Roads, Elizabeth New Jersey. Secretary, manager, Ramada, several bits known, at 101, Shears, bidding in this town.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Uh, Chairman, Councilman, uh, this boy, Mr. Nesby, uh, is coming to the board to seek approval of the purchase of, uh, the license held presently by Ramada, Ramada Inc. And she would like to express her, uh, 253, Morris Avenue, Elizabeth, which is a commercial to his own, as my name is, in, in favor of his pen. She is also on the contract to purchase the building. As soon as, if, uh, this application is approved today, uh, this boy is, uh, on the contract to purchase the building, uh, from the present owner of the building. She, uh, came to see me today, she advised me that there were some changes there. She led me to the opportunity requested there, uh, that she presented, uh, what the implications of the order. And basically, uh, it's, she found a gentleman who, uh, this is one of the, uh, she would like to hire as a manager for the premises. I spoke to the secretary before, I understand it, if, and she has approved today, uh, this gentleman called ABC and he featured it, uh, as well. Likewise, for question, uh, that's, so it's, stop, but it's making business because of the economy, is probably the thing, so also for time to assist, uh, this one, uh, the question of this business. You guys, you heard, you read, you need questions on this application.
Mr.? I'm sorry, what was the attorney saying?
I've heard, you know, uh...
Yeah, I know your name, you know, I know you, but it's, what were you saying on the, I find?
She can hear you, so.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I can hear you through the mic, please.
I don't know what you're saying, what else do you want to say? Do you want to listen?
This is, this is, yes, uh, this boy has a person in the building. If, if this application is approved today, she's on the contract, subject to, uh, the freshman, to purchase the building located at 253 Morris Avenue, for the present owner. And, uh, she's making a substantial investment in this property, uh, she's familiar with, uh, the property, and, uh, she is also, uh, engaging in services of the manager, who by the way is, uh, seriously, uh, and he will be a full-time manager, uh, based on my conversations with this individual. He had his own, uh, personal, in, uh, Birmingham, New Jersey, for about 10 years, to solve it, and I spoke to the secretary before, I understand that he will be, if approved, uh, the application. Uh, he will come to the, uh, office of the secretary, be featured, uh, and be met, uh, by, uh, this apartment, maybe, as well. And this, uh, longs for question, had a, a painting business, and a painting business with the company, uh, is not doing very well, so he has lost, uh, most of his commercial clients, uh, that were builders, so he now will also be assisted in his work in the operation of this restaurant.
Okay, Council? Okay, so basically you're saying that, um, for question number two, you've made a verbal amendment to the application, state again, there'll be additional people working with the current applicant?
Definitely.
Okay, we just need to have your information given to the secretary, so always, if the application is approved tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Volle?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President, and I'm glad to raise that initial counter, because I was also concerned about that, given that she's indicated only had two years of experience, able to work with her, and barmaid. So that I think that experience would help to help her through, so she really learn her business, and so she could be successful, it's going to be helpful. Uh, I just want to also, with this manager that was there, how much experience did that manager have, along as the manager in there?
No, the manager actually, really high, he's been interviewed, and he's been promised the position, it will be higher upon approval, if, if, upon approval.
Okay, well, then, how much experience does that mean?
He owned this, uh, Birmingham Field, New Jersey, for 10 years, our legal license, he sold that license. Maybe he was, he was, she found out, she was looking for a partner, and, uh, it's a beauty, she liked it.
Okay, as the councilman indicated, it's important, and he also complete the question.
Can we have, if the person's in the office, in the audience, can we have him come out?
He's here.
Okay, can you speak for himself?
He can speak for himself, sure.
Just, this is important, because there's a limited amount of experience before us here, thank you. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, my name is George Lando, uh, George, Lando, B.L.A. and B.O.B.
Councilmember Volle?
Uh, I used to own a place in Birmingham, New Jersey, since 2000 to 2010. Uh, I was the manager there for all these years, and I used to run the place, uh, with the, uh, twelve employees. I'm very familiar with the ABC regulation. And I give the modern honor that to serve, uh, Mrs. Barnes, in the new place she wants to restart very soon, I hope so. And I hope I can see you guys around there, you know, it will be my pleasure to serve you there.
Anyone else have another question for them?
You just, how many hours more on this side of the week basis do you plan to be at the establishment?
Uh, you mean, my...
Assistant?
Oh, no, I will be full-time, yes, full-time manager.
Mr. President, that's, I'm thinking, we kind of had the same concerns in the first application, and that is, where we're, uh, considering the application, we shouldn't have all of the application in front of us. Uh, to say that we're going to wait for somebody else to possibly fill out an application, or somebody at the last moment has decided, well, to work there, whatever, that's exceptional, very good precedent. You know, I, I, I'm going to support this application, but should we have the basics, the actual paperwork we have in front of us, not the radical, my helps, basic application in, in so far. Thank you.
Thank you, also. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. President.
President.
And there.
Thank you.
Good. Uh, do you have some, uh, discrepancy in the applications and testimony, uh, so far? Number one, do you mind to actively involve yourself in the operation of the business, like, yes, all seven days a week, and 10 hours a day? Second page, contradicting herself, allowing you mind to operate your business, late at 1:00 a.m., and which is all seven days, which is 15 hours a day. Uh, more towards 15 hours a day, like, so it's more than much that she's there for. So I hope that she is allowed this application, she knows, but she's getting into it. Uh, third, you go down to number six, do you mind to purchase the building privately? Yes, we have to testify, because we want to, to spend a lot of money renovation, or whatever, and subsequently, we said, do you mind to make any, did you change the renovation to the license you promised, and the answer was no. Uh, would you kind of make that, that's, very, I'm up to the license?
No. The question, the case, the, the, the question, it's on the term key, uh, status right now, uh, the investment is the value of the license and the value of the building that she's purchasing, which is a three-story building. And she will also be working, uh, at the restaurant, in the hours she can get.
Uh, Mr. Oliver, you know, I have four things, especially with people, two years of experience, that's a way, when is the service nice, like, to get tips, or you, you know, you smile, whatever, when you become, you become a different person, so. I hope that you will advise the applicant to do the right thing, uh, to figure out, uh, both of the ABC, what she's kind of responding to, or whatever. I'm not going to be personally, uh, toward against this person, because she has a dream, and I want her dream to come true, and I put that up in the line. Mr. Council, we have this department, or whatever, because then after that, the, uh, four toward council, which is in the ward, Mr. Sedaniel. You know, something that, you should say something to our example tonight, before, through the terminal force, for she to understand, and then I will be, as you said, when you recommend it, this approved this application, and I will be my council to approve, thank you.
Hey, what else?
Yes, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Um, here we have a question on the quarter, as you planned, it's going for eight people. It wasn't fascinating, when those eight people gave before, you just made me feel, I don't have some room in your concern, and the, um, the gentleman just told us that we are eight, or, or those new people, this is how I hear, new people, based on your attorney's representation. So who are the destroying people that you plan to employ?
Which, which, why?
To became our council.
Okay, there will be like other five people, like two waitresses, and a helper, two cook, and two chef, like, two chefs, like, first chef, and a helper, that will be five people.
Okay, you said helper, and a helper, and two waitresses, and a chef?
Yeah, two cooks.
Two cooks?
Yes.
Two cooks, two helpers, and two waitresses?
Yes.
And so, so.
Okay, Council?
Yeah, if that's what she says she's going to do. If that's what she says she's going to do, then?
Houseman Sedaniel?
Thank you, Mr. President. My major concern, I just echo the rest of my colleagues, I've never mentioned, a lack of experience, I know it was two years, and mainly it was being a waiter and a barmaid, and I know you did mention already that you're planning, uh, to hire a manager to take care of the establishment. But at the same time, as Councilman Keenan mentioned as well, um, it would have been great to have just the details, we do appreciate that you did bring him here, and yes, he did have a license for about 10 years. Um, but I'm also curious, like, what was the status of, of the way he ran that establishment, like, did he have any problems with the license there? Like, you know, these are things that we just don't know, uh, just because he had a license doesn't mean that he managed it well. But I'm in total in favor of having a transfer done, and, and how someone else has mentioned too, you're investing a lot into this. But at the same time, uh, don't go into this, in a sense, like, feeling this dough, it's, it's a light responsibility, it's a heavy responsibility. Uh, there's a huge difference between being, um, working as a waiter or a staff compared to someone that's managing, owning the place, um, completely. Um, so I just encourage you, um, to make your standard excellence in everything you do. I do want to know, uh, what security measures you're planning to do as well, um, when it comes to the establishment.
Um, actually, uh, decide to have a, a security guard, um, Fridays and Saturdays, we'll be doing more part dates, so that will be one of my dogs to have, to have a guard there, that's important to those two days.
So you're going to be hopefully on Friday, Saturday? We, 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 we have, we have security here? We, we have security here?
Oh, a security, uh, guy there to get people, for some of the people to, 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 yes.
A bathroom?
A bathroom, yes.
So the bathroom will be checking for IDs?
It will all be, yes.
And you'll be, will you have a, some, check with metal detector?
Uh, I will, yeah, I'll try to get something, and then...
And you're trying, and you have to, yeah?
I will have it, yeah. I'll give you the machine or something to check for this. Yeah, I'm going to get it, as soon as I have approval for the work, so after machine, but also, it may be going and getting, um, approval.
We think what I said, that, as you know, the, uh, world is really busy with, uh, homes, or, or what happened to the kids up in, uh, Newtown, Connecticut. Uh, we have to make sure, uh, that we have protected everyone in and out of the establishment, so we got to make sure we have some kind of metal detector, so that, uh, sure, just in case we decide to make any type of, uh, you know, a weapon that's undetected by him, uh, being, they have warrants, they can, they can, they can pick over, they can, uh...
Oh, okay.
Whether it's a box cutter, concealed weapon, or a shoe.
I will definitely, uh, I'll, I'll maintain, I'll, yes.
Anything else? And, you know, can I just, before, talk about the condition of the license?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to hear from our agency director, that, that location, is it, uh, on that block where we have problems, the best house, I mean, station house, which is a wonderful restaurant, but, but there's been problem with other, uh, places, um, in the area. What in general is the environment, what are you just looking for in terms of safety?
Well, I think there's a lot of restaurants, as we all know, there's a lot of establishments, there's, we're not really, there are, also, me, Colombian, I know, his name is, he's also Colombian, I think she'll fit right in, uh, in that respect. Uh, I didn't meet with her over the application, there were a couple of things that we did speak about, and she is, she's aware that how hard we are, especially on new applicants, right, I, I thought about it, uh, a few weeks ago. Um, she didn't mention, like, she mentioned to you guys, tonight, that she was interested in hiring security for, for, you know, um, Fridays and Saturdays, which would be her high nights, I guess. She mentioned that it's more of a restaurant than more like a lounge or club, or whatever, uh, like, you know, bigger lounges, clubs, it's more a restaurant. And she's pretty proud of the, the chef that she hired, she thinks it's pretty good, so, it seems like it's more a restaurant than a lounge or club, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, anyone else?
Just one thing about the live entertainment.
Okay, Council?
Uh, I see we have checked off a DJ, whether it be like parties going on, I mean, what, the police officers just said that it's more like a restaurant. It's going to be more like a restaurant, dancing, I mean, whatever.
The councilor, you know, you said, no live entertainment, you just have a DJ, where you be going in, dancing?
No.
Is that there for you?
Yes, yes, privately, plus a restaurant, and, like, like, for lunch, and having dinner, and after that, we have music, and, and for people to be at the bar, just, yeah, yes.
So there'll be no parties?
No parties.
No, so it'll just be there, and then, music, or whatever?
Yes.
But I would, I'd ask, the condition I think you for the license, no, 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 I, I, no, 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 except secondary for you?
Yes.